Nigga.
Alright, special sessions number nine. You ready?
Yep.
Introduce us.
Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, you already know what it is. The Smoking Committee Podcast brought to you a special session. You already know we doing these special sessions. We bring somebody appealing our community, somebody who doing some good shit. And we gonna tell them, we gonna let y'all know what they doing out there and we gonna show y'all the good shit they doing already. This is special session number nine.
Yeah.
And um, for number nine, you already know, we got the creator of Nine Divine for special session number nine. And this motherfucker, introduce yourself to you people, sir.
Duran Isabel, born and raised Huntsville, Alabama. Appreciate y'all having me on.
Ah, we appreciate you coming, yes sir. Absolutely. And I, I did that right. Nine Divine, right? That's the name of the new movie?
Yeah, that's the name of the new.
That motherfucker coming now like real, like, is it already out?
It come out twenty fifth.
Okay, alright. Y'all gonna be there. Yeah, I was trying to.
We'll get y'all some media pass.
Already out for them when.
It is gonna be.
See, I was trying to, yeah, like, no, I mean, well, go see it right now when, yeah, when you see us, you can see it already, god damn.
Pause this, go watch it.
Wait a minute, hold on, wait a minute.
And come back and then listen to what he has to say about it.
That'll work, that'll work, that'll work. I was finna say, wait after this, but you right, they gotta, you right, you right.
They could go back and forth. They could have it on two devices. There's lots of options.
They ain't gonna feel like getting either one of them, man.
You pause one, play one, pause one, play one.
Ah, okay, you got A D B or some shit.
I do.
Well, welcome to the show.
Yes, sir.
Smoking Committee Podcast, special sessions number nine. And we just gonna dive into this thing, Nine Divine.
Yep.
First off, tell me the, the title. Nine Divine had a little ring to it, to it. What's, what's that mean?
Uh, well, the, the main actress, the main character in the movie, her name is Nine.
Name Nine, so it makes sense.
So, and Divine, you gotta come watch the movie to see, you gotta see what that Divine part is, but yeah, he can't tell you that part, but yeah.
Alright, you got to see it. You got to go watch the movie.
Exactly, exactly.
Go watch it.
Absolutely. So you say you from Huntsville?
Yep.
Born and raised. That's what's up.
So what was it like, uh, for you, uh, growing up? Siblings? Household? What was, what was your kinda?
Yeah, I got two younger brothers, uh.
Are you the oldest?
Yeah, I got an older sister though. But I'm, I'm the oldest.
The older boy, okay.
I got two younger brothers. It was cool, it was, it was, it was all gravy growing up.
Yeah, y'all all close?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
That's what's up.
Jeremy and David, shout out to Jeremy and David.
Shout out Jeremy and David.
Other part of the Isabel Brothers, other people probably, you know, know of us, because when I first started out, they was running with me, you know?
Yeah, I remember the Isabel Brothers, yeah.
They was running with me. They still do, but you know, life happening and having kids, you know, working and all kinda crazy.
Adulting.
Exactly, exactly.
Kids and work, that make you change some shit.
Exactly.
Overrated.
Adulting is definitely overrated.
Now, just somebody's kids in the world. Like, damn.
No, no. No call the kids overrated, no call the kids overrated.
You know, I mean, I thought y'all was gonna be cool, but really, like, eh, you fucking clean up by yourself.
Hey, don't.
It could be so much better.
So, so, okay, so speaking of your brothers, how did, how did y'all, or you get into y'all doing what you were doing back in the day? Because, okay, so, let's, let's speak on that. You were, what were y'all doing? Let's start there.
Well, I mean, I've been making movies since I was like five.
Five?
Yeah, about five years old, I'm making movies.
No.
Yeah, I got a little home movies at home, like.
So you had like the tape, that had the tape to go on the tape?
Exactly. Yeah, you know, some, exactly, that's exactly what I had.
I had one of them.
Oh, we showing age.
I lost it. It was fucked, I, I ain't gonna tell the whole story. I lost it and I had some footage of some cocaine on there.
Ah.
And I was, I still wear it.
You gonna get a diet it one day.
So it was probably a good you lost it.
No, it's not.
Somebody holed it.
Yeah, somebody's got it now.
I'm gonna find him.
Right.
So wait, okay, so what was that, that had to be wild though, like, so, cause I'm not letting my five year old take this video camera.
But it was, but it was, true. Nah, but that's not, but you gotta think, y'all say that.
This motherfucker sell one hundred dollars?
And they was big as shit, they was the same size as you, like.
Well, actually, I was sneaking, getting my pops, he was always big on the gadgets and shit. So like, I was sneaking, get, you know, what he had and. It was a, when, when covid hit, we was watching like old tapes and stuff. And I was probably like maybe two, three, something like that. But he had a camera then, I was trying to reach for the camera. He wouldn't give it to me. I'm like, damn, you just.
You know what I'm saying, see, so?
Fuck, yeah. Tell the world, be here right now, so, but yeah.
So, Cinch Pop, what were you trying to, you just capture anything, or did you have something in mind that young?
Yeah, I mean, I was, I mean, I was just trying to like, I don't even know, like, cause I really don't remember, like.
Yeah.
What I was thinking at it, that was that young. I just remember like, just capturing stuff around me, is like, just what I remember.
So when do you, what's, do you remember some of the stuff that you captured? What's your memory of like, when I was real little and I had that camera, I remember this time?
We used to just make, like, I used to, I mean, whatever was come on TV, I'd try to make it, you know, cause you was like young and you impressionable, so like, whatever's on, you was like, ah, I can do that, I can make that, you know what I'm saying?
You made them empty TVs out of boxes?
Yo, I did. And you should try to blow stuff up, you know, back then everything was destruction movie, so like, trying to blow and just like, put firecrackers and crazy stuff and record it.
I'm always seeing that on TV. Cool, this nigga got a TV.
Kato, you were, what were you doing that year? You were making a movie, playing ball?
Not when I was five?
Yeah, whatever, you came out at eleven.
I mean, mate.
With a beard and a, and a pistol.
I was by nine, I was by nine, I was by nine.
So, okay, so, when, how old were you once you realized like, I could actually put together a vision and have an idea and have it come to fruition?
Um, I think early on, I kinda figured out that you could kinda control emotions and you can kinda like tell stories through like what I was doing visual, like what I was capturing. I was probably like maybe seven, eight, nine, something like that, ten, maybe, something like, started to realize people's reaction to what I was doing. And before I was just doing it.
Right.
But then you started to pay attention, you get older, you start to get more aware of like, what you doing and how people responded. People like, you wanna make people laugh, you wanna, you know, all of that. So I started to kinda see, and I kinda learned early on that you could use it as like a tool to like say what you have to say, or like, you know what I'm saying, put a spin on something, or. Give somebody something else different to think about and look at. I mean, it had that type of power where people would just be engaged in like then, and they wouldn't, that's, that, that's, that's it. It wasn't nothing else.
People at that moment, uh, family members, is this your older sister, your mom, your dad?
It was everybody. I just employed a whole family.
That's what's up, so you, you was built for this shit for real. You wasn't gonna do nothing else for real.
I don't think so.
Make movies.
You'd be sitting, you'd be sitting, you'd be sitting in class, you supposed to be paying attention and you'd be thinking about a movie?
Yeah, or making them. I used to sometimes take the camera stuff to school.
Man, okay, teacher, you're in a movie, he don't even fucking know it.
Especially when I got into high school, we had like Jay, we had like a production class. So that was like the first time, it was like, oh, they used to patch like, the signal to like all the classrooms in the school back at Johnson.
Damn.
So that was like the first time I was like really started to get like on my shit, and it was like, I gotta, you know, so we used to do like movies on, and like.
So how did you, okay, how were you, I guess editing then?
So like, at first what we had, I mean, they had evidence stuff like that at Johnson, you know what I'm saying? Mister Perry had, rest in peace, Mister Perry, he had like, it took over from this white guy named Mister Crump. And it was a big deal back then, because like, you had people in there was making movies, you know, like you in high school, you looking at the people older than you, you know what I'm saying? Like the seniors and the people older, like you looking at them, and they out there doing they things, you're like, shit, we can do it. So, that was kinda where I kinda started at home, like, started, you know what I'm saying, really work on my editing skills and all that stuff. Before I was just doing, uh, tape to tape. And just, or editing in camera, you'll pause it, go to a different location, press record.
Start recording again.
Yeah, so like, stuff like that, but yeah.
So you went from that to now you're using what?
My phone.
Man, we went back to the phone. Full cycle. Fuck all that good shit. We got a, a little survey we take.
Alright.
It's, it's a couple of questions we like to ask. Um, they ain't really got nothing to do with nothing, but we like to know people.
Alright.
Do you pee in the pool?
Do I pee in the pool?
Do you pee in the pool? I'm just.
Do I pee in the pool? I probably.
One hundred and I be, okay.
I thought it's not something I currently do, like I don't go to the pool to pee.
What, no?
But like, you know what I'm saying, like, oh, who are, who are clean pool, like, let me, let me, it's not that type of, it's not that type of.
Cause I got pee.
But I remember like us being in Atlanta one time, we was in Atlanta one time and we was with, uh, we was out, my auntie had stayed, we thought we was big shit, like me and my cousins was out in Atlanta and we staying with her. And she had a pool in there, it was like all type of girls and stuff at the pool, and like, it was like a waterfall, it was like real fancy, like apartment, you know what I'm saying? So we were getting there living with her, like she would go to work, she would work at Home Depot, so it was like, right, took over the pool. And we was talking to some girls, something like that, and I just kept thinking to myself like, nigga, you need to go use the, you're like, get out of the, what you doing? And I, we just, I just stayed there before I knew it, you know, it was just like, hey.
Too late.
You can't do it with the girls there. They did it first. What you mean? Everybody in this school, the poop peed in the pool. It's your song.
Uh, but now, but of course, like now, I, I got to be something damn near like, it's just, I mean, I would try to get out of the pool, it's bathroom at this point in my life.
It, I count how many people in the pool.
Girls do it first.
You take up a, you take up a ratio, you do the male.
Yeah, I count how many people in here, cause I assume everybody in here pee. So if there's too many people, I'm not getting in here, cause it's probably most to pee in here now.
And you're not getting in the pool unless you can pee in it.
Same way again, thank you.
What you mean?
That's what you're saying, you're not getting in the pool unless you can pee in it.
No, unless it's not too many other people have already peed in it, because I'm going to pee in it.
Right, so unless the ratio warrants you being pee, you're not entering that body of water. You wildin', my nigga, you wildin'.
Trying to stay safe out here.
People that pee before you is too, all of y'all.
You was in the, you don't pee in the pool?
I wasn't in that pool.
You was in there first, that's why I came. Hey, come to the pool, the water warm as fuck.
Jesus fucking Christ.
No, I, um, how long is it okay to leave hamburger meat in the refrigerator?
Damn, it depend on if you freezing it, or you set refrigerator.
Yeah, you bought it from the store, brought it home, put it in the refrigerator, it's Monday.
And this is like, groceries are like hamburgers on a, uh, fast food?
Yeah, no, these groceries. This is raw hamburger, ground beef.
Damn, I don't cook, so I don't even know for real, for real. I guess when it starts stinking.
Oh, oh.
I don't know.
That's a good answer though.
A guess. That's a good answer. That's a good answer, but maybe before it starts stinking. I feel like once it starts stinking.
It's too late.
Yeah.
That's when you throw it away?
No.
No, you probably be sick, but, but I feel like before then, it might, you might just had a runs.
See, that's, no.
Now you cook all that out.
You cook it out?
If it get old though.
So that means it's okay forever then?
No.
Which you could cook out and then out?
Stinking, you can't cook it out.
You could cook that out?
Nah, your taste is stink.
Okay, I feel.
That's my guess, what?
I don't know, I don't know, I got three days.
Cause I don't cook, so.
I got three days. I don't cook either.
I go to the.
I mean, I cook a little bit every now and then. Oh, man, I fried some, I fried some chicken that was so good yesterday. It'll never happen again. It was so good. I was dancing over the thing, eating that chicken, cause the batter was falling off. A little bit too much batter, a little bit too much batter, but.
Do it every time, man. You got the good fat chicken.
Cook, I.
You should have wrote this shit down, rest of it.
And do something, and.
You already got, you got your go to spices and stuff though, right?
Yeah, I got some that's gonna stay on, on the shelf always, but man, anyway, I don't, Kato, Jesus.
I would.
Alright, so.
If you could be an animal, any kind of animal, what kind of animal?
Damn. Probably a bird.
A bird, just any kind, no, you gotta pick a bird though.
I don't wanna be a hummingbird.
Damn, you gotta pick a bird.
No pigeons, no.
No pigeons. No scrubs.
Man, what?
Yeah, I wanna be a scrub bird, um.
It's fucked up, pigeons. Them all the birds are the scrub dope too.
Probably like an eagle.
An eagle, American bald eagle.
Yeah, American dreaded eagle.
Okay, then a dreaded eagle, okay, that's your eagle, yeah.
They going locked eagle.
Never seen one of those.
American locked eagle, yeah.
Okay, then, that's what's up. We, we could do some more interview questions.
Jesus.
I like your questions, Kato.
Yeah. We tried to mix them in there, we still.
I thought you was gonna spread them out a little bit, you hit the rapid fire.
We got some more?
That's for sure, for sure. I, I'm sure you do. I don't doubt it at all.
Yeah, I feel like you're holding back.
Man.
This was just a poll question, the survey.
So Duran?
Yes, sir.
How did, how did you start writing?
As far as like scripts and stuff, like stories? Um, probably around the same time, again, like, oh, this is kinda like, you know, cause you were shooting, you're like, okay, what I'm supposed to say? You know, people getting, what you want me to say, what I'm supposed to do, so you gotta come up with something.
I didn't think about that.
Around the same time, yeah.
You gonna be like, what you want me to do?
Yeah, so it's like, you kinda have to think of the story. Now it's kinda like different because people growing up with social media and, and media and stuff, so it's like, everybody wanna do it. But back then, like, you was kinda weirdo. Well, I'm still kinda like a weirdo, but like, back then you were super weirdo for like, be, you know, people was kinda scared of the camera, like, get that out my face.
Wasn't they go in our hood that kept a camera? But, like, yeah, nigga, nah, you go back in the house, god damn, you be out here recording shit.
Exactly, it was not cool, too. It was not like the thing to do. People was trying to play ball and like, you know, like, be Jordan. It's your drugs, like, so.
Camera?
But now it's kinda like, yeah, I guess it came around and caught up, so now it's kinda like cool, you know?
Well, now that you got into a point where you make, um, I guess, particular projects that you have ideas for, instead of just recording and going with.
Whatever.
Flow of things, what, how do you come up with an idea? Well, what inspires you, strikes inspiration for whatever you plan on writing or trying to create?
It's kinda weird for me because I kinda always kinda looked at film, like again, like as a way like to, cause I don't, I'm not really much of a talker, I don't know if you can, you, y'all probably can't tell right here, I'm talking to y'all, but like. I'm more kinda like introverted, so like, I kinda use film as my way to express like how I'm feeling or what I see through like my gifts, I guess, or whatever.
That makes sense.
Most people kinda like use it like a flip, or like a come up, like, are we finna shoot this, we gonna go through here, such and such and such, but I've never really looked at film like that. That's probably why my film and stuff's kinda like come off the way they do, cause I've never looked at it as like a come up. It was just some always.
Doing this for the love, instead of for the fun.
It's a, it's a medium for you to communicate through.
This is basically number five now, right?
Yeah, I think this is the fifth one, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Ah, movies. How does that feel from the first one to the, how did it feel when you finished the first one? Not when people saw it, like when you knew, I'm done with this?
The first one was like Angela, you met Angela Witt, that was like the first one. Nobody seen that one, except maybe like a couple of people, but the one that people really started to like catch fire and went viral, some YouTube was Last Disciples. When that was done, that came about like, again, I was in a trap shooting videos. But we used to, I always been like, like big on church and like God and faith and stuff, this is how we was raised and stuff, so even while I was at there, I was still on Sunday like, fall up in the church.
Church, yeah, man, go ahead.
Fall up in the church, but at the time, like, we, we shooting the videos and stuff, like, I would tell the guys, like, we been two years old, like, what am I finna go? And they like, oh, we, we, we trying to go where they never been, where we'd start going to these empowerment sessions with my pastor, and we used to have like these knockout conversations, kinda like, are we sitting down there?
Yeah.
And so I was like, dang, it'd be cool like to show this visually, like, what does it look like if you had like the streets, uh, mixed with the spirits, like, what it look like? And that's kinda like how, with Last Disciples ended up coming about, that's why all the people you seeing there was like, you know, that's who I was running with at the time, was around at the time. Uh, but to see that come out and people respond to it was dope, because of the message and what we was trying to say with it, trying to go against the grain, feel me? And for people to respond the way they did, and it was so different, and it wasn't just like, which ain't nothing wrong with like no dope or some, you know what I'm saying, treachery, like.
That's what everybody do for real.
Exactly, you know, you could do that and get away with it.
You know what it's about, yeah, man.
So, well, how, what's the difference in the feeling from when The Last Disciple, when you got the feedback from The Last Disciples, to you finishing this and having something new out? Or even just the point of time anticipating this next project?
I think I know more, as far as like, like, I definitely grown more maturity is just as far as like, the type of stuff I wanna talk about, and the stuff I wanna say or whatever. But for me, the process is still the same. For me, when I was five, six years old, it's just, I get more opportunity as I keep doing them, more doors open. You know, God bless me, with different people coming in my life, we get sponsors, we get, you know, it's just all people, it just kinda grows, but. I, I pray I haven't changed, or the process hasn't changed, it's just, just progression and like the content and stuff and maturity.
I feel Kato itching for a question.
Come on, Kato.
I guess, okay, no, so, to say, you could make a movie, you could pick one director.
Yeah.
One actor, one actress, out of anybody dead or alive ever.
Hmm.
Who you working with?
I wanna work, I would wanna work with Aliyah.
Aliyah, okay, then, alright.
Yeah, I used to love, I, I was, I used to be obsessed, I was just like, that's gonna be my wife.
What soundtrack?
Romeo Must Die.
Ah, okay.
Ooh, that's a classic. Oh my, that's a classic. But yeah, I think her, cause like, when I'm working with people, I just, I wanna work with cool, talented people. Regardless of what you look like, how much money you get, like, I don't care about names, I don't care about none of that. That's why I, I work with somebody that I see on the street and then work with a Hollywood actor and put him in the same scene. Because I don't look at it like hierarchy, like you something just because.
What you telling?
Yeah, I don't care.
What you doing?
And that kinda got me in trouble before, cause I've been in rooms with people and I guess they want to meet a, and then just like, you're just a regular person to meet.
Man, what, eh?
You human too.
I mean, you on TV and you say you got, but I mean, I don't know what's really going on, but I mean, I don't really care, you know what I'm saying? So, but that's just kinda, I definitely wanna work with Aliyah.
What about an actor?
Actor.
Anybody else?
Hmm, anybody ever. Anybody ever? That's a horrible, and a guy, actor is kinda tough.
What's the dude that played Franklin on Snowfall?
Franklin on Snowfall.
That's the thing about actors, a lot of times you don't even know their name, you just see their face, you be like, I know this dude is such and such, and she was, yeah, so you're looking at the face, but. So, I, I mean, I don't know, I just had, we just had to stick with the actor, that's just.
Director.
What, and what about a director? No, didn't say, Will Smith, none of them niggas?
See, the thing about like, directors is like.
Nope.
I guess we grew up watching music visuals, so like, for me, hype was just as much as like, probably more so than Spike Lee or something, you know what I'm saying?
I saw a lot more hype with.
You know what I'm saying, like, that's, that's, that's kinda like who I, when I even go home, like, record and watch the videos.
Make a movie with, with.
That's what I wanna do, work with hype.
When you see this.
When you see it.
Call me, and then I'm gonna put y'all, cause I be fucking with hype sometimes.
For real, oh yeah, let's make it happen.
Man, okay, nigga, who? Kato? Nigga, I know who the fuck is, why you get this up?
Kato, yeah.
But Billy, Billy, Billy All Time, one of my favorite films, like Billy is like one of my favorite films about hype, so like, yeah, definitely one of them.
Billy fired, huh?
Yeah.
That was good visuals, that was good shots in that moment. I didn't think about that, yeah, that is, that did look like a fucking, like, um, what is it? Steady, are you ready?
Yeah, when they came in with the blue and they had the contacts.
Yeah, like, yeah, that was like.
It looked like a music video, yeah, I ain't never, yeah.
Hell, yeah. So, Aliyah and Hype Williams.
Secret Talents.
Secret Talents.
He got into Secret Talents.
You know how to juggle.
All I can do is make movies, that's.
But you gotta be able to do something else.
I think that's it.
You're a good fisherman.
Mm, can't be. I got a good ear for music.
Okay, then.
I don't know if that's a hidden talent.
So you're an A and R on the side?
A and R.
Kinda sorta, because like, a lot of times we doing the movies and stuff, I be trying to like look for, you know what I'm saying?
You do gotta find somebody to be a good musical director and.
Something I definitely got a good ear for music, I get that from my pops.
How difficult is it to pick like, uh, the music that is not in, in, uh, an instrumental?
Yeah.
And is not an actual song, but that other music?
Yeah, 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 the scoring, yeah.
How difficult is it?
Super, super.
I'm so, I, I'm so weird, I be watching shit and like, I was watching something not too long ago, and it was like some real fucked up, serious shit going on. But all I could think about was the score behind it and how they decided to pick that particular track. That's all I could think, oh. It was Joe Button interviewing the dude that survived in the tower, and it was twenty-two floors, I, I, I didn't give him enough credit. He fell twenty-two floors.
Oh, damn.
They called him the tower surfer, but he was like inside the tower when it collapsed, and he was like in the staircase and he survived, and. But he, it collapsed twenty-two floors, then he fell down and survived somehow, but why he telling this, so it's a horrible story about nine eleven.
But he had the score.
About was like, how did they, I wonder who picked that particular track?
Did it work, did it work?
Yeah, it was, it was right for the moment.
Okay.
But I be wa, when I watch shit, I be thinking shit, like, I be thinking like voiceovers or like, did they record this or something, I be thinking of other shit.
Like an editor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You do all, everything like that.
Yeah, I do.
You can't do shit around there.
I be like, is that Foley, or did they just use a sound effect? It's like, and I can't talk to nobody about the book.
But that's dope though, I mean, I be, me in, being in this line of work, you kinda look at stuff different like this.
Yeah, so, I hate, I.
I guess kinda like a musician, like if they, they don't listen to radio or listen to streaming the same way.
I can't, I can't.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I'd be like, hmm, they use a little bit too much reverb on this.
They got too many T D, it's, it's a horrible song now.
But sometimes it's like a great chord progression though, so you know, there's good, there's bad.
I don't know nothing about none of this shit. I was in the band till I couldn't.
What you played in the band, Kato?
I played the saxophone for like three weeks.
Why did I play saxoon?
I ain't really know what the fuck I was doing.
In school, everybody wanted to play drums and saxophone, those were the two.
I tried to play drums first, but I was high when we was trying to do this shit.
You was playing, you, you were perfect, you should have stayed in.
I had no.
Everybody else.
I'm saying, I had to keep a rhythm, and I was high when I heard the rhythm, and I was like, nigga. Nigga, no, nigga, no.
So what do you, I mean, how long is, what is, what is the process like? I don't, I have no idea what it's like to sit and pick scoring.
For me, it's kinda like fluid, like I just kinda go off instincts. I don't really have like a process like boom, 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 I just kinda like, I was like, okay, I gotta have this type. I usually don't know what it sound like, I'm not a musician, and to that degree where it's like I can actually hear, sometimes I can hear like what I wanted, but it's not that direct, so. And I really wish, like, it's hard to find people that's into that. Everybody wanna rap, everybody wanna make a beat, but I feel like if we moved into scoring and doing stuff like that.
Yeah.
It's such a lane for that, because you don't, you can't find it.
RZA did a whole movie.
Kato like, dude, you just gave me an idea.
I got it, man, don't even worry about it.
So when do you do it?
Give me up where you need some scores.
So would it, okay, so give me a, uh, just a short outline synopsis of a movie process, would it, so you think, okay, bye, I got an idea for something and I'm gonna start writing?
I see something in life and it pisses me off. And then it's like, yeah.
So then you be like, alright, I gotta write out scenes, I gotta come up with characters.
We really know, really, it kinda is gonna sound crazy, I would think I'm a psycho, but like, a lot of times I start hearing the dialogue, so like, the scenes will start playing out, it could be in the car, it could be in the shower, it could be.
So, is the music coming then? Or do you, what, is it, is, once it's done, you start going through the editing process?
Music kinda comes in for me like at the beginning of the process, so like usually how, I'm kinda telling some secrets, y'all gonna have to put a subscription or something here, sorry, and give you like tip as it, but like.
Just say yes or no, just say yes or no.
Subscribe to the pack.
All the sauce, just say yes or no.
Subscribe to our OnlyFans.
I would say like it kinda starts like I gotta kinda create a world, you know what I'm saying, for me to go in and work in, it's gonna sound crazy, but like, and in that world, I got music. So, like for Nine, I had like.
Like you know who's playing on the radio in that world, so you can just pick the music that you need for what you want.
Pretty much, so that's kinda like how music, the music works, it's kinda like I gotta create, have it in the world when I first start writing. But then like later, it's like, okay, I got to figure that out, because I can't use them tracks, I mean, I don't get a hundred thousand dollars to license or, you know.
Right.
Track or whatever.
Uh, interpolations?
I think it is.
It's a weird word. Copy it. It means plagiarize.
It sound good.
Okay, interesting, interesting. Well, you, you going? I'm going.
Nah, it, it might've been weird before. But now, oh, it might get weird, weird. You play Would You Rather before? Would you rather do this or would you rather do that? You know how that works, right?
Yeah, but I never played it before.
Okay, well, most people hadn't. You seen it on TV probably.
Nobody plays Would You Rather except little kids.
We've seen it on TV. That's why I've seen it. Well, either way, we finna play today.
I've seen it on the Smoking Committed Podcast. Y'all check out the episodes we got, and the special sessions episodes, and the Chilling With The Smokers episodes.
They do.
So how do you, do you win? Like, how do you, what's?
Know what's going on.
You gonna go two rounds, you gonna pull two cards for each round. Each card is gonna have a scenario of something. Would you do this? And the other card would be another scenario.
And you can't pass.
Would you do that? Well, you can't pass.
You can't pass.
We have the option to make you put one of the cards back and pick another one. Cuz some of them kinda tame for real.
Some of them kinda weak.
Some of them don't go together. They might not match for real.
Strong enough to hold things up, then we gotta take it out.
Yeah, but yeah, no, you can't pass. Disclosure. It could get weird. I told you that, um, so expect to be weird, goddammit, um, if you.
Have you seen my movies?
Okay, so, so fair enough. Pick two cards. What do we got? Ah, okay, that's probably a good one. That's probably a good one. That's the reaction we looking for.
This all, this is it?
Maybe not.
You gotta read them.
Read them out loud. What's, what's the first one?
Have everyone in the room discover your darkest secret.
Okay, what's, what's the other one? I feel like we gonna put that one back.
Be on the receiving end of a glory hole.
I feel like these are two from last week. Yeah.
Yep, sorry. We haven't started yet.
Man, okay. No, no, pick two more cards. Those are the cards from last week.
Yes. He, he gave you the wrong end of the box.
I, I did, I did.
knowingly eat a poison ivy salad. Walk half a mile barefoot through two feet of maggots.
Give me the poison ivy salad back.
Those are both.
But we can't take with one of them back.
Yeah, we can only take one back.
So take, take the other one. Poison ivy salad.
Attempt to breakdance at your next work function.
Or what's the other one again?
Work half a mile barefoot through two feet of maggots.
These some bullshit. Which one you wanna do?
I would attempt to breakdance at my next work function.
You don't, do you, you know how to break, you broke dance before? You was on some cardboard before? You spray painted something before? You tried to tag something before?
I'm horrible at art. Those suck. Give me the cards. Absolutely, round two. I don't even like this game no more.
Yeah, that was, that was some bullshit. You got all keys.
Okay, then.
Alright, let's see what happens here.
I probably shouldn't stop the round one. Step in dog poop at least once every time you leave the house.
Should've been barefooted.
Have your hands feel like they're covered in lube at all times.
We gonna put barefooted on the dog doo-doo.
Yeah, I don't care if it's barefoot or not. I'm going with the dog doo-doo.
Exactly. I wouldn't want my hands.
You can't drive nowhere.
You got out easy.
You can't get nobody a high five. Nah, you just step in the dog poop, take your dog poop shoe off, switch it out with your good shoes. Alright, rinse it out, it's a water hose.
Every time you leave it out.
Yeah, fuck it.
Give me, give me slippery hands.
Lube hands, you gonna have frozen lube hands.
Why they frozen?
Cuz when it get cold outside, your lube hands gonna be cold.
Not gonna be able to open the door though.
Just glove my lube hands.
They still gonna be wetting there.
You right, you right.
But you gotta think all day long with slippery hands is weird. You better open up no doors.
That's weird to wear gloves all the time.
They gonna drip down.
No. Oh, you getting, you not getting the fur gloves. You getting medical gloves?
Yeah, black, black one like.
Alright, Breaking Bad.
I'm just saying. You got off easy. Hell, you, you got off easy. He peeing the pool though.
Definitely peeing the pool before.
Um, alright, damn, slippery, uh, yeah, you nasty, Kato.
It's clean slippery?
It's not, what's, what's clean about lube?
Uh, uh, what you, if you ain't lubed nothing but your hands, it's still clean.
I'm not feeling it, man.
Clean hand, clean gloves, clean lube. Yeah.
I, I'd like to know how you feel about, um, cutting hours out of your productions.
What you mean?
When you film something.
Oh, like what's on the cutting room floor? Like deleted scenes or something?
Yeah, stuff that you have to take out.
And I never, I usually, everything that I, is usually make it to a screen. I don't have like a whole bunch of deleted stuff.
You know what you want from the joke, goddamn.
To do that, nigga. Don't touch it.
I don't got no deleted scenes from that, not undone.
Oh, I wonder what it's gonna be like when you encounter that. Have you thought about that?
I think if I was working for somebody else, I probably would, because they probably wouldn't know what they wanted, or would have some sp- specific ways that they wanted done.
Okay, I'm sorry, but this is sounding real fucking cocky.
I'm telling you, this is the humblest way as possible.
Whenever you make a movie.
I've been doing film since I was like five. It's a long time.
And ain't no, ay, look. Now, when I was like.
Jackson the film.
The Michael Jackson that since five.
And then too, like, I think too, like, if I was working in a studio or something like that, then they would tell me to cut it or something, because of somebody else, but I've always been my own.
I'm glad you said that, cuz I'm, this, this is my next question. When you're dealing with actors, are you dealing with taking, uh, doing shots or whatever of the scenes? Um, yeah, takes. Yeah, I mixed, I was, I was trying to get that. Thank you.
It's just like you recording niggas, no, though.
I was good, that's what I'm.
That shit could be.
Is it like some niggas that be like, oh my god, this nigga goddamn.
Cut, wait a minute, what's the line?
You need to go smoke a cigarette or something? You need to nap? You wanna come back tomorrow and do this? Like, or do it be like, no matter what, you just see the vision and as long as you can work through it?
So when it comes down to like filming, like, everything is, like anything, everything is energy. So. The only thing that kinda like throws it off slightly is if somebody not on their game, or having a bad day, or, or get, or, or, and, and, and they bringing it in. Pray. Get in the corner and pray. Exactly. That's exactly what goes on. A couple, a couple of times, we shot Last of the Cycles, I told everybody to stop, because I felt the energy, you could feel it. Like, you can feel when.
We need a, we need a breather.
Cuz I know what it's, I know what it's supposed to, I know what it's supposed to feel like. So if it don't feel like that, and there's no reason why it shouldn't feel like that, I mean, that some, you got an energy of the, something in here that.
I'm a reverend, so call me and I blessed to say.
So, okay, if you don't have things that you wish you could've kept in, are there things that you wish you could've added? After going, after seeing something that you done, you five in now, is there something that you watched that you done and been like, you know what, if I could've added a little bit in this part? Or if I could've added two more minutes to this scene, like, do you have any of those kinda moments?
The biggest thing, like doing stuff independently on our side, with me being an indie or film, filmmaker stuff, is your limits on resources. And like, having small budgets and stuff like that. So like, but, uh, to that degree, you have to be more creative and you gotta come outside, cuz you just can't throw money at it. You know, like people that got budgets, they like, oh, we just, and it's. A million dollar, I want to. Right now, I got, so that's one of the things, like, you know what I'm saying? Like, damn.
Got some money.
Are you ever gonna do the two B, uh, shooting scenes with no real gun? How you feel about that? And then it'd be like a flash like on YouTube, and then it'd be like a little red spot, but his shirt ain't red after he falls?
No, I don't think so.
How you feel, how you feel about those? You wanna speak on it?
No, I don't wanna speak on it. I mean, it's like, cuz they, I feel like with, with films. Like people do, you, you doing the best you can with what you get. So it's like, if you see it, like a lot of times, you like laughing, but the, the, the thing about it is.
It's still creativity.
If your story is good, people look past the limitations. Cuz people know what you, you know what I'm saying? People know.
Nigga supposed to got shot.
So if the story is good and you rocking with the director of the story or something, you, you, you know.
I'm turning the shit off or I'll never watch again. Then there's bad movies that you be like, I gotta see that shit again.
That's so bad it's good.
Well, not for everybody, but I think that there's always a way to appreciate the fact that somebody put something together. Even if it's not something that you really like, you know what I'm saying?
It took a lot of work and effort.
And then too, like every movie got an audience, so some people like, you know what I'm saying?
Your biggest improvement from one to five? What do you think you improved the most in? Even though you've been doing, this is, okay, I shouldn't, this gonna sound weird. You, so you've been doing it since five? But from movie one to five, what do you think your biggest improvement was in, in your production or your direction or your creation or?
Yeah, I think just being more comfortable with saying what I wanna say. Cuz when I first started off, I was like super, I'm still kinda shy, but like super shy about like, being creative or like, kinda like. Just coming from left field and being different outside. Cuz being honest, being a black director, a black male director, people, everyday people and people in the industry are expecting a certain story out of you, content out of you, material out of you. And if you come different from that, they be like, oh, who's gonna watch this? Or, or, what, where is this going? Or what, why should we, it's all these questions, which I've gotten before, you know what I'm saying?
What is your, what's your response to those?
I can't, I don't wanna say. I, I'm a Christian man.
That's fair.
That's fuck with y'all, thanks.
Everything Kato say anymore. But it's just like. So when we, like when we did Candy, you know what I'm saying? Like, for me, Candy was like a story about a girl ch- trying to overcome her past and trying to find love, in like different crazy places or whatever. But people see that and they like, oh, so we need another candy in two or three. I'm like, I'm not doing this shit two, three, four, five, six more times. Like, the story is a story. But they just looking at like, oh, this is dollar sign, or, or let's exploit, you know, uh. And they get, I mean, I was, there was people in the industry and they stopped fucking with me, you know what I'm saying? But I'm like, okay, fuck you. I'm going on to the next project or whatever. But it's tough because when you get into it and you kinda see it how it really is, you like, damn, you know what I'm saying? Like, I feel sure the same thing with rappers and people who do music. Like, you start out with a love for it, but then you start to see like.
You gotta say this to get this, goddamn.
And people trying to, like the actual purpose and people behind the scenes is making decisions.
Trying to guide your creativity.
And then it's like, it's crazy because like you got, I'm gonna sound, but you got like these places that you can put your movies at that specialize in black content, but there ain't no black people over them.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Sounds like America.
And then they come and tell you what type of movie to make, and you black. So it's just like, it's, it's super weird. And I had to tell them, I had to break down a couple times and tell them like, you don't know black folks, like. We watch everything. You might not watch a black movie, but we watch black movies, white movies, Latino movies. We watch everything, you know what I'm saying? So it's like, but, so it's like. But it's like, that's one of them things, you know what I'm saying? Or like, they, 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 they try to peg you a certain kinda way, or like, limit you or put you in a box. And it's like, no.
It's, it's the easiest thing for them to do. It sucks that that's the way the industry is and the way that the world works, or America in particular. Of course, this movie industry's other places, and some of that bleeds into each other, but the way things here are, is kinda fucked up when you trying to build something yourself. That makes me curious though, what is your ideal end goal, or do you have one even? Are you just riding the wave, or do, are you trying to do a Tyler Perry, get my own whole plot of land there? Just director for life? Do you have like a vision of?
Like, cuz like I said, I, I think it'd be different if I just got into this game and like had a certain, this is what I wanna do, or this is what I wanna accomplish. But like, again, like.
You just doing what you always loved doing. You just riding the wave.
Try to stay true to myself and my style and the type of stuff I wanna make and not be into like people's, what they want me to do.
To me like, every, every time that you're doing something, you're pushing it just enough to see how many more inches you could get out of your audience, or out of the people, the powers that be or whatever.
I mean, it's, 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 it's a fine line to toe, because why would you say I wanna say a message? I have a message, like, nobody wanna watch paint dry. So it's gotta be entertaining, it's gotta be something people wanna watch.
Motherfuckers did watch a tire kill people. Motherfuckers did watch a tire kill people, so I'm just saying.
Yeah, I think the, you right, the, the, the bar is kinda what.
It's subjective.
The tire.
I was like, what, what is this? No.
But again, like, I think like a lot of it got to do as far as with the industry and stuff. Now, everything is so economic driven. That's why you get a thousand sequels coming out, and no originality. There's no original story. You know like how we was growing up, we had all these different stories. We had black movies, white movies, all type of movies. But now it's like, you gonna get the same thing, or they gonna pull a IP out that's twenty years old, that they know people gonna watch just because it's nostalgia. Yeah, so it's, it's a weird time like to be trying to do stuff, because everything is money driven.
Do you have an id- do you have like a, um?
Or they want money, or they want you to pay them.
You have an ideal movie that you feel like, at some point, you'll be able to create that, will be that thing? Do you ha- you have that little thing in the tuck, like?
Yeah, I got, oh, I got like, oh, yeah. The Arsenal is major. I already got like three, four, five movies. But I got, uh, the next two projects, the series we doing, getting ready to call Born Again.
I'm saying, what I got, I gotta, I gotta, what I gotta do?
You gotta audition, you know how to do a self-tape?
That's what, see, they keep telling you to show up to the auditions? Ain't nobody saying no?
You right.
They keep telling you, well, you better.
I'm at the next one, I'm at, I don't know what the fucking self-tape is, but I'm finna Google.
You basically just record yourself saying the lines. It's like a virtual audition.
So I need to act that some scene.
I'll help you.
Plymouth Rock didn't let.
Like, and you never know, cuz the game's so crazy, like, you'll look up and be a star of a whole movie, and then you gotta bring me on to be like second camera or something. You gotta look out for me.
You call director in this bitch.
Okay, you make, you call the shots.
Don't give him no, don't give him no ammo. Keep all your ammo. Don't give him none. He don't need it. He don't need it.
I told you.
He don't need it, boy.
But I tell you, the game is that crazy where like.
Yeah, just take the one time. Like all, it just take one song.
A casting agent told me I was, I was Hollywood handsome, and he been hating.
I haven't been hating. I've been trying to bring it up to make sure that everybody else knows, but also warn them that the arrogance that he already came with probably shouldn't be sustained by other people as well.
Well, arrogance, I mean, that's the industry.
Yeah, ay, he got it. He ready.
I can't even argue with you. Like, I can't even.
Hey, what it, what is it?
Talking about arrogance, oh my god. You definitely gotta have confidence being an arrogant. You can't be scared, like, I was telling, uh, one person, he hit me and they was like, hey, I'm trying to audition, and they was, had all these questions. I said, look, dude. You gotta have confidence. And in me, you know what I'm saying? Cuz it.
Do you ever see yourself casted, or have you ever casted someone that didn't have the confidence initially, but you saw something in them?
You gotta have some level, because when the camera roll, you gotta be able to show up, you know what I'm saying? Like.
How many takes is the average scene?
It depends on the person, all their lines and all, or the chemistry of the actors.
See, count one and done. I'm, I'm, I'm in there, I'm out of there.
You might be hitting a hundred, you might be batting a hundred, but then you might be with somebody else who.
Who keep fucking up.
They just gonna get to them, and you gonna say, man, he gonna go out for a smoke break. That's how it happen. Because you gonna get some first rate.
Included, I'm gonna take those, you right. I'm gonna take those. I am gonna take those. I hope you do fuck up a little bit, nah.
Where, where we at? You got?
I got one more. Three dinner guests. You get dinner in a restaurant in the world, you get to bring three people. I guess they dead or alive too. If they, they undead. They not gonna come like zombies. She was already at the movie shoot.
Who else? And, well, I got, we, we got to say.
I'm Christ conscious, I know I'm big Jesus free, so Christ is gonna be one of.
You bringing him early, so everybody else gonna be fucked up, huh?
Well, he can come whenever he want to. He don't got a time. He can do whatever he wanna do, cuz he, he got, he got the power to turn the water to wine, so he can do whatever he wanna do, like.
Bring me a bunch of waters and some breads.
Unlimited saying grill.
Just one fish, just one fish. Just one fish.
Alright, Aaliyah and Jesus. I feel like this is a good time. Who, who else?
And, uh, mm, I feel like we need some entertainment, so I gotta.
Busta Rhymes.
Busta Rhymes.
I wouldn't do Busta. I do love Busta, but I wouldn't do Busta. I would do, um.
ODB.
I like ODB too, but I wouldn't do.
Nah, yeah, he might not get along with Jesus.
I gotta find somebody who gonna be able to mesh well. I don't know.
I would love to fucking, man, boy. Absolutely.
He's the most forgiving person ever. You be okay.
Fuck, you smell like weed.
Ay, we going somewhere.
Everybody in the street in a prostitute.
I told you he slept, he's not slept with.
No, I think he just sent it to the well or something.
He did a lot of stuff.
Tell the people where they can find you.
Tell them about your location.
Isabelstudios.com. Y'all can go in and check out all the movies.
Can you spell it for him quickly without?
Yeah, I S A B E L L E, Isabelstudios.com. Or you just Google it and try it the best way you can, it's gonna pop up.
Studios, no Z, just S is.
I got Isabelbrothers.com.
It's the same, yeah, it's the same. Isabel Brothers, Isabel Studio, both of them will take you to the site.
Same site, okay, then. Ah, see, that's their fancy shit right there.
Instagram, you got anything, anything else you wanna?
Y'all can follow me on Instagram at Duran Isabel, um, you know, social media, it's cool. Keep up with the projects and everything we got coming up.
Where can they find the, um, projects that you have out already?
Everywhere, they on Prime, they on Tubi, they on like, all the majors, well, I'm not gonna say all the major, we ain't on Netflix and Hulu. But like, if you, if you look up, you go on the website and click the title, it'll take you to like, the platform and stuff, the movies is on.
Everything is centralized on the website. If you got anything going on in your life, you gonna go to the website and get your life right.
Including auditions, I know Kato on auditions. Scroll to the bottom, you see the subscribe?
I'm for the kill you and take your place.
Nah, you can't go. He ain't invite you. We gonna need a cameraman. I can't invite you to dinner with Jesus, it wasn't even my dinner.
And then Jesus gonna know I was the killer. We appreciate you coming through. I've enjoyed this interview, this little special session, special session number nine with the Smoking Committed Podcast. Red Isabel, look for Kato in, uh, one of his upcoming projects. Um, find him on his website, Google him and his brothers.